...............................................................
Senator Lencel Vasilius?
Oi.
Senator Rubaike Kuo Inabo?
Oi.
Senator Steven Cheik Quartey?
Oi.
Senator Tichey Imruul Monsau?
Oi.
Senator Mark Ebrau Rudim?
Oi.
Senator Mi Sangbau?
Oi.
Senator Gassougi El Tapsungino?
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal?
Oi.
Senator Salvador Sadoit Allams?
Oi.
Senator May Sonier Abangal Wips?
Oi.
Senator Shesilil Aldabe?
Oi.
Mr. President Karaim Mariur? Mr. President Konz Pobles?
Oi.
Mr. President Ariakorum?
Ariakorum bo don tira Floride regid, Senator Aldabe, bo longti gai gregid raurele, Senator Aldabe.
Oi, Presidente, el mutel malungilita silsel mergao ma vicepresidente ma rebekel senator sel Jose Ilmea sesioner al silsya. Esu la bodalmol martial achendargide, tomisera achendargide, presidenta ngamal batoka informaisyonanga alsel, madi dalungilita kalorengarebekla adebo se edel modruti al achendargid. La deborsel longewal ayram, mubmada adaptra 8 days journal ra 11 regular session.
Si da motionu namdung esegun el momlara 8 days journal ra 11 regular session tirge roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Ramoyche, Flolider.
Malmol mumsel ayram five, ayegel guknara obisa vaitoral may. De not sel Prescam 11 das 3 o 4, tiangha transmitra presidential directive number 23 das 59. Niangha establisia independent state in allotel belao fair organizing amiri for the republics 29 independent state celebration and 23 allotel belao fair October 1st 2023. Sel trakamigaisyon el 11 das 3 o 5, a consideration el moadrise the republic to accede to the United Nations Treaty on marine biological diversity of areas beyond national jurisdiction. Tiya twitil al girela consideration olbirolulal girela segidel namdung. Sel trakamigaisyon 11 das 3 o 6, a consideration of a joint resolution el moadrise and approve a interest rate adjustment for the existing loan agreement between the Republic of Palau and Mega International Commercial Bank Corporation. El moadrise approve a waiver of sovereign immunity and consent to jurisdiction for existing loan executed in 2016 and 2019. Tiya di informaisyon el bo da chensera atretelela interest rate el mregel namkatmoqal loan, de bo informaisyonarebekla adma bo appropriate partra galen. Sel Prescam 11 das 3 o 7, a transmitra presidential proclamation number 23 das 253. Niangha declare a month of September as a national emergency prepared next month. El mo prepared tirge el ma wodala al girela tora disaster. Esel Prescam 11 das 3 o 8, appointment tra mis general sumam to the Financial Institutions Commission Governing Board of Commissioners. Tiya appointment el mo abord, madi da notaring sel bo appropriate partra galen. Sel nextel kamigaisyon 11 das 3 o 9, appoint tra mis Mr. Elway Ikeda to the Compact of Reassociation Board of Trustees. Tiya girela appointment el mo abord, madi da notaring. Sel nexta Prescam 11 das 3 10, tiangha invitation for the 78 session of UN General Assembly, tiya sel guk on dibloa blulaladel al namotroqla ta tiya invitation el merbelao el mo girela segidel assembly. Sel ulbong le presidenta 11 das 3 11, tiangha transmitra executive order number 484. Niangha more reconstitute a national coordinate mechanism to facilitate and coordinate the government of the Republic of Palau's effort to combat the occurrence impact of noncommegable diseases in the Republic of Palau. La otutra kamigaisyon, dereka de de visor ba kame trigis, se debola appropriate partra galen. Ikeda malmol mumsel ayram 6, ayegel guk nara department kamigaisyon, nara department head sel may. De not sel department kamigaisyon 11 das assembly 4, niangha nan paper regarding the address of Federation Council of the Federal Assembly of the Russian Federation. Sel tal 11 das 75, gukmasal al girela Internet Governance Forum 2023. Sel trakamigaisyon 11 das 76, al girela Pacific Islands Forum Women's Leaders Meeting. Sel department kamigaisyon 11 das 77, gukmasal al girela second plan withdrawal of funds from the Compact Trust Fund Investment Accountant and Certification of Budget Authority. Sel longingil sel 11 das 78, amsal al girela Digital Residency Office Annual Report 2023. Anexel 11 das 79, a request for meeting between Economic Advisory Group and Olbirolulaw. Sel ulubong le department kamigaisyon 11 das 80, amsal al girela third plan withdrawal of fund from the Compact Trust Fund Investment Accounts. Ayegel gil nara department, el kamigaisyon mle, iki da malmol mumsel ayram 7. Ayegel guk bills ma resolution ma bebe ra kamigaisyon mna house sel may. Aringi sel House of Delegate Kamigaisyon 11 das 163, tiya transmitra House Bill 11 das 114 das 11 HD1. Tiya sel enaktmentra budget ra blurbelao, el mo girela fiscal year 2024. De da notaring, se debola appropriate partra galen. Sel nextel HOD Kamigaisyon 11 das 164, a transmitra House Bill 11 das 78 das 8 HD3. Niangha okmo amende sel PNC 35, ka section 13 o 9, al girela tora alentlaim ma arela alentkort. Sel trakamigaisyon 11 das 165, a transmitra House Joint Resolution 11 das 51 das 11 S, tiyangha moratifar sel International Convention for the suppression of acts of nuclear terrorism adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations, sirat April 13, 2005. Longingila 11 das 116, tiangha transmitra House Joint Resolution 11 das 58 das 12 S HD1. Niangha more approve the executioner sel interest rate loan amendment for the existing loan agreement and any related permission ino between the republic and Mega International Bank. Tiya sel tirakasel gamakamigaisyon na presidenta me. Dereka nganiha House of Delegate Kamigaisyon 11 das 167, niya transmita House Joint Resolution 11 das 60 das 12 S. Niangha more al expressa aklinta rin ma amlatkal girela ma support el mortirge ne efektada tiya recent al waifar, niya dilu ablura maawira hoi. Ayegel gida okmala na house sel may, iki da continue mumsel ayram 8, report of standing amiris. Aringi sel one report ngasem, mubmada adaptra standing amiti report 11 das 176, tiyangha girela senate resolution 11 das 126.
Si da motionu namdung esegun bo don tira chairman ra turist gregid, chairman Sangbau bo lviskida report, Senator Sangbau.
Sula, Mr. Presidente ma, wilita silsel mergao ma rebekel senators. A committee rgaro terrorism, environment and maritime. Ablem refer ngia senate resolution 11 das 126, tiya senate resolution more confirm a presidential appointment Dr. Sen Lin Tang, el mosorbe member of Palau International Coral Reef Center Board of Directors el monater merforius. Bo gatakle, Mr. Presidente, intenta tiya resolution, ma committee rga, amle ngwa resume ringa girel nominee. Edireka mostebe el dereka ngwa ayegel response ringi, mo ra questioner del chend ringa a committee mori. Sel bodo misera resume ringa Dr. Tang, inga gatakl kose ngaa yiloha bachelor's of science degree ringi, raviology geology ra division ra plant pathology, ra galits of agriculture, National Chung Sing University, sirat ra ra 1987 el mo 1981. Dereka yiloha masters of science degree ringi, ra division of microbiology and immunology, ra National Taiwan University, sirat ra ra 1993. Ngai, Mr. Presidente, dereka amle earn ra PhD ringi, ra department ra microbiology and immunology, lobengela high distinction, sirat University ra Melbourne, Australia, sirat 2002. A committee rga, dereka milamol men lulmesera resume ringa emlamati giregri kase sin sirat 2017. Ngai, dereka ngara research center Taiwan. El expertise ringi, ngara oral health associated microbes. Emla, emla make up toal significant contribution el mo ra field, tiya girel field. Yola dereka amla international recognition, regelurel emla, emla, emla publish abtoora 170 articles on various scientific journals. Dereka throughout trakore ra Dr. Tang, dereka amla langara gagarousa position, el dereka ma key roles ra organization. El altaim and currently president of Taiwan Society for Coral Reef, a committee member of Taiwan Microbiome Consortium and Future Earth, a secretariat of Scientific Committee on Problems of the Environment scope Taiwan branch. Since 2021, emla serve as a leader of the group of sustainability and ecology in Taiwan Ocean Union, tiya NSCT. Dereka Dr. Tang has extensive experience ringi, ra education on college and graduate school level as a seasoned educator. El la o role as a professor of various universities ra Taiwan. Under supervision ringi, emla ngari ngia akmeda ngara 15 el students, emla earn a PhD degree seringi erthir, and most of which has become professions or researchers in universities my institutions, including National Taiwan University, Peter McCollum Cancer Research Center, the University of Melbourne, my MD Anderson Cancer Research Center. Dereka tenure ringi, ngara university, emla collaborate with several government entities, research institutes, my universities, my NGOs, to successfully organize multiple academic seminars, my meetings, my outreach activities. Since 2006, Mr. President, ayegel gukkora academic pursuits ngala have circled around microbiome microbes. Ma symbiotic bacteria, ma pathogenic bacteria. Ayegel gura amsal araktela marande, Mr. Presidente, mal gura. Dereka chora research ringi, amle kante na comprehensive investigations ra girel coral disease alse la Taiwan. Ma dereka examination of the coral associate microbiome in response to environmental stressors such as changes in temperature, acidity, ma utrophication. Ayega, Mr. Presidente, dimlotkel girela, ayegel gura araktela gorals sel sugumong gora nganiha changes, ra guk sel dukkasing gora acidity ra tha o malunging temperature. Ma dereka sugumong malmoklo arwa alchira alse la tha. Dr. Tang, Mr. Presidente, dareka amlas perhe, the Coral Restoration Project el centered on establishing a coral farm. Collaborating closely, lobentira gagarousa partners, the primary objective has been identifying resilient coral species capable of withstanding future environmental conditions. Et tiagidel endeavor has aimed to create a stable source of corals for transplantation. Mr. Presidente, tiya gura research seringi, amdeyek ma se, ayegel gura toal impacts of climate change. Abtoal, gurel engalada, dereka lo mes kase ngara el marande ayegel telgib, el gura msi si ra togora sel borbaba temperature ra tha o mangarakle. Mostebedo olava ayegel el marande, dereka guk transplantra areas, el moste el mutel mori ngarowtra a goral, sel mo helpra ecosystem. Mo notalli over the past 17 years. Ngai girel Dr. Tang has started surveys on coral associate microbes in different corals and coral reefs across the entire nation, ra Kuroseo current region, tiya dereka mo include ra Shaval, Taiwan, Philippines and other Asian countries. Is the first pioneer researcher of metagenomics in Taiwan. He chose coral reef as his research target. They recently developed potential microbial probiotics for coral culture and restoration, which remained mostly unknown back then. His team has succeeded in identifying and isolating the bacteria which he is developing as probiotics for coral culture and restoration. This phenomenal research was reported by medias like NHK, da sel esfamosel media ra Shaval. In 2023, he co-adored the microbial mat compositions and localization of patterns explained the virulence of black panda disease in corals. In finding a successful and strong background ngai girel nominee, a committee rga, mal lomarak masing his developed plans and suggestions, el mo ra sentere, Mr. Presidente. Ngai, ayegel de insert seringi, amal gura amlomotaklik, kase okmo momoal tangat, among mora a sentere, ngari ngi, ayegel guk gura aklegieng ringi, madu ringi raureol. El soal dereka mo introduce el mortial sentere gide. El guk moste el guk mo omesa bebe ra togora research ramrand. El mo help la advancea understanding regid, abtoal el girel issues girela coral reef ecosystem. With that, Mr. Presidente, dereka lula is, sen gal, dereka notingik, kase ngal nominee, adiaga gora seobai, malung financial connection seringi, wal gora mo restrict seringi from fulfilling his role as a member of Palau International Coral Reef Center. Mung vice, ta gire, Mr. Presidente, a committee rga, terrorism, environment and maritime. Conclude, kase ngogiwia experience ngalaad, ma educational background ringi, ngamal domarak, kase nseel mo big asset, el contribute el mora board ra Palau International Coral Reef Center, mang haluspia a committee malungitra adaption, et tiagidel committee report. Sula, Mr. Presidente.
Sula, Senator Sangbau, Maria Solmiga Amint, Senator Mariur.
Mr. Presidente, amsal la Senator Sangbau, ngamal gura askulela, madu ringi, gora malimisil, ngarbab, mal oyeng ringi, ra metion ra adabel. Qadi shage, chairman momdela, se tiya member, tiya le member sibra adaborda gora reef, ngari ngi, gora gora requirement, o sentere la, ra ngudal blulamom member ringi, ma tila adabelao. Wasfemlu vice.
Senator Sangau.
Oi, Mr. Presidente, sel sel make up ra board ra Palau International Coral Reef Center, ngari ngi, tiyela don godongutil, kase international board members. Megidamdeyek ngawi, kase kadamli approve, ringel Dr. Paul Richmond. Girela imong, ngari ngi, girel gukulumteera Dr. Tanaga Gem Lomrik, adra Shaval. Ngai gire, ya guk blol nominee trinya president, dereka may replace seringi. Se dereka ngari ngi, are ex-official members. Mr. Presidente, el tovra ministira, ma fengel minister. Ma dereka minister financial, dereka ex-official members. Ngari ngi, tiyel regular members, el gire, dereka member approve, tiyel adabelao. Sula, Mr. Presidente.
De gya hodu. Sumdeyek, etirge roguil gongel tiya standing amiti report 11 das 176 du oi. Om tok. Namai, Flolider.
Presidente, kadamal mol, se gira dimli imol report, ngara ayram 8, dereka time. Da, ndiakan ngara anain, ma aten. Nukpodiun mumsel bill galen, der. Edora first reading ekmum the passer, a first reading, a House Bill 11 das 114 das 11 HD1.
Si da motionu namdung esegun, ma klergam iwe taitol.
House Bill number 11 das 114 das 11 HD1. Bill for now to enact a budget law for fiscal year 2024 through the addition of the sum of 110 million 432,987 dollars and appropriate of the amount of 108 million 802,987 from the National Treasury for the annual channel operations, special revenue and debt services budget of the Republic of Palau for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2024. Kiya dasmala, amltobu da omotmoqra yosa ngara blurbelara ra ra 2024. Wol motmoqra 110 million 432,987 emoltobu da 108 million 802,987 dollars, sera omsangela blurbelagirela otmaklila kabalmenta blurbelara ra ra mo endra September 30, 2024. Tiya dasmala, pitiusinya, takl presidenta blurbelaro, suran eswips junior.
Maria Solmiga Amint. Senator Sangau.
Presidente, sora te ala, madenase, tiya ra first reading, ma payyongit, telte ale, Mr. Presidente, kase pol sebeela, a committee, mo ngin lowreor atiang. Edatega temede, Mr. Presidente, guma ra kase ndiakan, gigerel ngara, letiyan, mo motmoqra, arangalela budget ra blurbelao. Ma kulingit, mang, kulingit, a patience, ra hole is a president, tiya blay, ma volsa, la, a committee, motelgib, ngil, tu i, tiya togora budget. Mr. Presidente, akumdas, ndiakan ndiakan tamal, al sugumong guk magirel, mo gora continuing resolution. Le, emlam katmoqra before the some of the policies that we're gonna put in this a mostetra future, al direksyon, ayegel budget sel Maral May. Al sugum, ndiakan ngil, gura mo tirtritiang, Mr. Presidente. Am afraid, kase, mo gora norma eswigo. Every time, sel onpusa tiya tebe, tiya tebe, adimral mooroid regid. Emomring regida, mo break tiya finishing line. Guma ra, ma se klo ngara, le, akmal olitra leader sibragao. Bo se, amesa, aknoltam, ma dam chair gide ra way sen mince. Pol ulbong ngara roguil members, bo don ngil, gutmaklit tiya lulior. Guma ra, Mr. Presidente, se tiya tiya isel, kro yosa ngara blurbelao, el mostetra programs are going forward, ma kulingit, se gide. Ki damdeyek ma se, Igana Ameri, gida has not fully recovered, Mr. Presidente, mregel el mo girel mo fiscally responsible, el girela odorabwail, ki damomoit, el girela future blurbelao. Sula, Mr. Presidente, te al.
Sula, Senator Sangau, Maria Hod. Senator Aldabe.
Oi, Presidente, taktirel imobengela Senator Sangau. Emokmuse sel toal girel tiang, tiya dereka, ngara first reading. Ni sel a president, tiya se gide, tiya gide, ngino sisul el proposal unified budget ra 2024. Legal, namomregel, al talbul, madaringel. Ya, Senate, milatmoqla amal, mle extensive el budget hearing, lobengela, bekel el department ra national government. Edireka, mostebedel, gutmoqla al bo deholda budget hearing, lobengela, ayegal state government, aygal roguil state government. El girel sel el proposal, ngaseltian, el mo increase ablaqram. Sula, Mr. Presidente, ak tirek, yegoy girel, lalgo, Senator Sangau, kasing klo, policy, tiya donotmoqla ringi, mo affect a future, ar adabelao, ma tretelela ado notmoqla yosa ngara blurbelao. Akumdas, ndiakan, al soad, el mo oabodega, table, lablemer gide, tiya 11 ol government, tabol blame mergide. Kasinga, koda gora, awadi, blel, tarraqla, tretelera malu, beda, bled irresponsible ata action gide, el girel tiya yosa ngara ra ra odog, el girela 2024. A House of Delegates, donling, niangha me initiate tiya el budget el al 2024. Serat chula, era midra chula, etira, mle, niya receiver tiya proposal budget. Se girel chula, el menmutre lang, eh nimlaa, atal gora, ama consultation, malu, gora kamigaisyon gide, lo obentir ra adra house. It just recently Elizabeth, eta passa tiya el versionertir. El sel domes seringi, ngangala, krai giroguil blel anticipate, malu, beda watram, ne project, er sel le original proposal, Presidente. Man klawtutalele, Mr. Presidente, bo da, don ok, beklaad. Edesa tiya guk portion ra house. Edewe, se kasinga, ayegel bebe, implications niya sebeel mo affect ra a future operation government, taktio mesatiya el proposal ra house. Ngwal asain ra, sel klungela, fandel mo omalu ra yosa ngara executive branch loan. Akmedel 90% seringi, adimara grant, malu, beden, ayegel udogra at trust fund ma, aygal eh loan udogo. Mongora, ndiakan, reflect ra ngil, se sing, el girela a ngil, responsible fiscal policy. Al suguma executive branch, ser gide, ngi main, el department, malu, bang main, el branch, government, el deliver a services, el mora arangalira adabelao. Abodol tuira, ak yosa ngar ngil, ultuira, akmedel 90% if foreign assistance, malu, bang loan, el ogiwaa borrowing. Se gide, Mr. Presidente, al soad, el mo kauda ngi, gida ma kaliks, ser gide ra adra house.
...
...service. Malam me bodo, o el altaim e bodo ki meri kwa se egal state government amalal provide la service. Mga demora i gi gi de provide ndinga kado longas etyal udo del morse mo gidi de gata. Alsum kada gati kada gatoro gui. Nga kado longas arbebele guk to gata egal essential services, Mr. President. Edo goiti tril me madou hearing la ban tril edo go okoti kwa se garam de al meru lau reol. Agundase, Mr. President, kadamla, se lulorinya Senator, kadamla, agundase kada natelgi belo ba akra priority serigid ma direl lulorinya Floride. Ndinga kalsabe el de katiang e se ldo ngod odu urti edo ku se komaram garam garam. E la kado bestera resource se lulu reol. Akmal, lngite, bido olde respecte chair, agundase ngire da malal mogo, okma ulma, Mr. President, tau ilala alda da ga kwa se. Me bodo do ngok le la kado sa lau re edo etyal ureol edo gatmakli. Agundase nganiya inafeltaim se edo lau reol guk makli. Ndidi bo gongi, edo do lngit ra klo tam, Mr. President, tem ala ra kamitim lau reol. Eng sebe edo guk makla continuing resolution, ndinga ngire da meru la garale de mo ngile, Mr. President.
Sula. Niang di ngile, nga, ekse de se lfitinde, Mr. President, ndi ngile ngide de le budget ta mo ngile. Akte lngite Senator Tawalwal, kama Senator Kwartey, bodongha budget tra ospita ma a school, misteri ra full budget de la gado gat. Senator Udim.
Sir President, etia, direkli, ishut to gara gurule. Ndi soakal shere ngi Presidente direkku ospe la leadership ra gau mteal blal guk makli len. Se la bol mki ta yana de ma, agundase Senator Talamse lmenchionari ngi la bol ulle ma social media ma egal e media. Amenchiono asse se lbol ulle traba baget tra tuita mo ngi da vice president de direkli mil goi. A questiono asse ra adelsme ra ma morse omes tra ospita gi de la uisei. Ntogada de la ngi ala damma la dil ma, ala ados pe a ngos ba toga de la ngi. E gi da do ngok kertiara omse ngela la uai. E uai etyal blal mdele la questiono asse intao ungraa ar ngi. Nta amli gi de osmea kambala ar se. Nta gi de mokpatsi ar ngi. Alsum abla amar se, e gi da da ngatiang, si dan gau, agundase Presidente, malda kalungis se asinga lau blu belau. Ndi soakal point asse Presidente, malpart consideration ra kamitira gau. Sir President.
Sir Senator Kwartey.
Como representante mutu wa la la first reading. Ti me asugiu el moil altgoi. El gi de la ahele ma education, ma justice. E malal lngit el wase, se lbertanyo de complaint wase nde agar ma de agaram. Etiril du wase nde au du dam ma nde asam ma ar. Ma di wase partneringa management. Ndidi direkli partneringa, mrengal galak tra transfandeler, ada deha, direkli de au du di. Ma kmo gogwa se gi de, Mr. President, teri bal moru ei. Se lobo se lastel miscellaneous rel alsils. El eleven das nine one five. Mbabier el mora chairman Inavo. Lngit el wase wase smi agel matching fund. El gi de la yel two million dollars and infrastructure maintenance fund. El mo repair la hospital. Ma kongit el wase, triel Senator se se la admitro ngi la ah Minister Finance. Eh, kora ya mlo gilinge, na na mlo du ra adra house. E to ngile wase tila maltra koto klo lutoi. Ma kongit el wase, me eda nga olse de morse gi di. E do til wase, kadamla, seriosel gi de se, sula.
Niang, malmsho le Senator Kwartey. Senator Aldabel.
President, akte, ringa kada nga first reading, ndinga ngila de point out egal kora concern ma da, ede se lwo do gora press with time ra omagatmakli etyal guk mo aksioner gi ra gi de etyal naamil na la house. Ndidi do lngit ra chairman ma qamli nlotel berry far se l yel total. Aqor aflik, omesa se l difference ra, se l authorization ma appropriation. Eng eh, do omesa gi de guk lel, karo se la items na alse etyal budgeteng. Mornia wal discrepancy ra three hundred fifty thousand ma, kada diduktel berry far ngilim. Se le edapa yero gul wal, el authorize wal, one point nine million. Eh, agel total ra, authorize ngatiang wal, el ngario, wal, one point six. Ngari ngisi gi de na three hundred fifty thousand difference. Hmm. Wal gora, yarela uru, ndinga sebe el chens ra ah school apertial ra ngalela yosam, eda berry far se gi di, sula.
Ndi nganiya ngudel. Senator Inavo.
Ngari se ngala section twenty six, Senator Aldabel, el de authorize, edimla al appropriate ar ngi. Agundase se gi de gi de mo additional more authorization ta lau ramlo talgi bel overlook se gi di. Ma akon etseka totali eng, da dimla authorize se edimla appropriate ar ngi. Ndidi agundase with ah omur ngil wase appropriate. So, kada, kada mutu mutu se asing malngar se lastel linea, ma lau ramlo deha linkluda total. Sula.
Ndi nganiya ngudel. Sum di nganiya ngudel, tirgero gul gonger etyal luldassel mola ra koto lomngivel du oi. Om tok. Madat etyal budget ra twenty twenty four, amlam nga ra koto lomngivel, ma assign ngil mora chairman aise and minutes. Yol ngit chairman obol sebe el dimre da reol ma ut. Mal sebe ele lo mu ra el alsils, ma klugu kumangaos. E gi de tena mo o de ngi gi de la rule. Emla nga uha hearing ra neishu executive branch. Ma egal betel state, kadamla de ngi wase ngaraka de meru, ma agundase ngasve de la dimre de la guk makli. Flo leader.
Dal malme, Presidente, el morse nextel bill nga first reading. Ma move the passa first reading, House Bill eleven das seventy eight das eight HD three.
Sir, motion namdu ne segn, ma cleragam iwa title.
House Bill number eleven das seventy eight das eight HD three. Bill for not to amend thirty five PNC subsection thirteen oh nine to enable claimants to present all their claim theories to the land court. To amend thirty five PNC subsection thirteen fourteen to provide a mechanism for the correction of technical errors so that citizens are not burdened by the expenses of correcting said errors. To amend thirty five PNC subsection thirteen seventeen to clarify the authority of a probate court to determine who gains descendants' interest in his or her pending land claim if ownership of the land remains undetermined at the time of death. And to authorize the land court to transfer pending claims to a probate court. To clarify the land court's priority jurisdiction over the determination of ownership of unregistered lands and the trial division's original jurisdiction over disputes concerning registered lands. And to establish a new temporary mechanism for the land court to hear grievance resulting from previous decisions by the land court. Terdas mula, terdas mula, amomlud ra thirty five PNC subsection thirteen oh nine omse ati alir al al claim atemu olta yel rogul gora theory setir girilla claimer ti mra la land court. Direkli momlud ra six, ah thirty five PNC subsection thirteen fourteen omotmo ra gora rolele, yel technical errors ra haragri la bol aya omsodel mdeha lburden ra adal ngia ble file a claimer. Direkli momlud ra subsection thirteen seventeen, rosi seal PNC. Mo gora so clarify gi de rogul authority ra e ngila probate court. E mo olta ti el adal ti la gi de momlai gi de gora loklira adal mlamosme. Direkli mo olta ra, mo ngil omsodela to gora land court, ma guk to gira la trial division. Terdas mula, remitio se ngia, delegeta noa omsong.
Kariana, sol omsodet etyal to gora utma, etyal to gora utma omodonglili, time ra trust territory, time ra siabal. Le ra trust siabal amlemta motmoto mluha utma, mala kloklede ma. Eh, guk may gi de la ospe. E me lmutel ela gi de etyal, gi de etyal. Kada la guk kaymakmadu ngi, di ngi omsodet ra to gora utma, ndi nga kado ulen. Kada ospe ngi tarat goi ma. Senator Udim.
Sir Presidente, ti ambaral mokatal do sao ar ngi. Di Presidente, ti adi concern mora kamitim mo misri ngi. Aldas mula, asse to correct technical errors. E uai gi bebe la sermentum la du ma, badagodongea se. A questiona, mo se sing admittance of negligence. Admittance ra kantila kabulmenta. Kada di mo kelpu re se gi de, Mr. Presidente. E gasetan moknok, mla idale mla, amrengalaba bebe la contract, bebe la do ngok, ma di bo gikre se. Sula, Mr. President.
Di nganiya ngudel. Madat tirgero gul gonger etyal luldassel mola ra koto lomngivel du oi. Oi. Om tok. Ti a assign el mora chairman ra JGA. Bol omes etyal to gora utma. Ta to gara adamla madim, mlo di nganiya, ma atemiri. E di nganiya, e di direkli di nganiya mondal me lmutel ela alsils. Flo leader.
Kadi, sir Presidente, e gi gi de, se gi de gi de guk na second, ah first reading. Di nganiya, second madur. Meda continue el morse twelve resolution ngalender. Eh, Presidente, ma ngari gi de resolution ngara garifra, ngari se l appointment ra ah Chu Young Edward Park. As a legislative council for the Senate eleven albiro lau, ma se ah resolution eleven das thirty three, one, eleven das one thirty three. Confirm a presidential appointment tra Elway. Ma se eleven das three four, mo confirm a presidential appointment tra Miss Suma. Ma direkli, e gi de House Joint Resolution Ratifier. Se ratification se l ah international convention to gora nuclear terrorism. Se l tarah House Joint Resolution, gi de la to gora interest rate ra alone. Om se direkli one, ah House Joint Resolution eleven das sixty twelve, das twelve S. De mo expressa sympathy gi de la etyal disaster dilubra blu Maui. E gi de, Mr. President, ma di amasai na kamitir galo mo mes, ma lobi nganiya som place adoption eh, e beski da direction gi de.
Se l appointment tra ah Elway. El mora board of trustees ra Kofa. Labora Senator Inavo. Eh, se l presidential appointment tra Chanel di Suma, el mora FIC, labora board ra Pangin. Senator Basilius. Se l et gora tourist ma terrorism, at nuclear terrorism, na direkli mora kamitira JGA. Se l, se l to gora interestang mora kamitira Basilius. Mor adoption? Oke, mlebor adoption. Eh, se l olta ra kantila rongil mora ra adra hawai. Oke, ma gi de tablo, mora adoption eh. Eh? Eh, se l number one kada mora adoption? Oke, ma direkli mora adoption. E gi de keldel mora adoption gura di el alsils. Flo leader, gna wa mondal.
Oke, Presidente, madamal tirakka direction ra gau, e kada, kada mo chance order etyal calendar gi de, eh place se gi de ah Senate Resolution eleven das one thirty two. Se House Joint Resolution eleven das fifty eight das twelve S HD one. Ma House Joint Resolution eleven das sixty das twelve S, el mora adoption. Somu.
Sir, motion namdu ne segn, ngire la gi de keldel mora adoption, tirgero gul gonger du oi. Oi. Om tok. Namai.
Ah Presidente, ngoriakl mora adoption calendar resolution. Madaporsel kota resolution, mek ek move da adapt tra Senate Resolution eleven das twenty six. Edontira cleram, li mea title.
Cleragam iwa title.
Senator Resolution number eleven das one twenty six. A Senator Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Dr. Sen Lin Tang to serve as a member of the Palau International Corps Senator Bodo directors for term of four years. The Resolution amo, omel kela vetrol, gi de la doctor Sen Lin Tang mo dal se l PICRC Bodo directors el kelsi le barra. Ta wu daktar Presidente Senate Loconspaulis, pay request.
Sir, sir.
Ah, rado sekyo, ngodakang se asen, ma di gano formasen, nganiya sen. Oke.
Kamlu.
Akma, kadi, mlesoakal mature nganiya, mla ngi asen a motion. Se gi de la komla ngim.
Komla ngim. Senator Sangbaw.
Ya, Presidente, akil ra ulal mora Vice Presidente.
Senator Mario.
Kada mora senkyo. Eh, Presidente, ora senkyo, kadi soakal gora uha, se l guk se ngi la gi de etyal, e ga, etyal gora rifab lel, gora direkli ngi pregida siabal, kabulmenta siabal, ma kabulmenta amregel, mdo se ti international scientist eh, tirra siabal, ma amregel la mra member. Di la mlamomregel, ngela da siabal, da udil asengra gwa amregel, amregel e moria uka da taewang, ma kadi se gi de, di soakal gora klir ngilim. Gora malmoltomli se l guk ne drongel gi de ma, a siabal gi de etyal, mo tela, etyal gora rif. Kodigore se gi de.
Senator Sobaw.
Sir Presidente, mal, we shall gi de la Vice Presidente. Mr. President, ta to ta, mla ngi se l coral, coral resilience workshop. Mla ngi te aligal mesa, doctor golbo, former CEO ra Palau International Corps Center eh. Ulige ra maldisusi, ulige el bel race ngi ah Vice Presidente kwa se. Ti a gora mla ngi se l gora try agreement, el bitunar belau, ma amregel, ma siabal. El mobile de etyal, ma etyal appointment tra a gi de lengal guk a da taewang, ngi amo, wo represent the international board member. Eh, kwa se ndiaga, ndiaga lesanga gora tomali se gi de. Tirga mle open ngi, ngai gi de guk ne intereste, ede mla guk na menil na ra siabal. Mlesoalme, Mr. Presidente, ma, agundase ngadi ngile basul se, Vice Presidente.
Oke, kamigo tirashort wishes. Mor a order? Flo leader.
Oh, Presidente, motion mo adapt se gi de ah Senate Resolution eleven das one twenty six. Ma, mokadongha senkyo.
Cleraga, rosa balot. Short wishes. Kada ngadongashe, senegid, mora order. Ma senkyo el mora, Doctor Sen Lin Tang, el mo dal ah Palau International Coral Rift Center Board, amle thirteen yes, edi nganiya no. Congratulations, el moro ganuba. Flo leader.
Oh, Presidente, kada morse nextel resolution, ma move da adapt tra Senate Resolution eleven das one thirty two. Ti asel mo confirm appointment tra ah Mr. Chu Young Edward Park, el mo legal counsel ra ah Senate, er al eleven albiro lau.
Sir, motion namdu ne segn. Ma cleragam iwa resolution.
Ti a Senate Resolution, amo, blutka Mr. Chu Young Edward Park, ngi amo adrala la Senate, el ontrima taral biro lau, ta wu da takka Presidente Senate Loconspaulis.
Presidente, eti la se de di ngara voskot.
Ah senkyo?
Hmm, senkyo gi de.
Oke. Ka, mikolra short wishes. Kouta mka ngadongashe senegid, mora order. Flo leader.
Eh, Presidente, motion amo adapt tra ah Senate Resolution eleven das one thirty two, se l confirmation ra na mo confirm appointment, ngai gi de le, ma adrala ar gi de le Chu Young Edward Park.
Oke, tirgero gul gonger ti resolution, el mo appoint tra Mr. Jung Young Edward Park, el mo legal counsel ra Senate, el du oi. Om tok. Namai. Flo leader.
Presidente, kada morse next resolution. Ma move da adapt tra House Joint Resolution eleven das fifty eight das twelve S HD one.
Cleragam iwa resolution.
House Joint Resolution number eleven das fifty eight das twelve S HD one. A House Joint Resolution to approve the execution of the interest rate loan amendment from the existing loan agreement. And any related promissory notes between the Republic of Palau and the Mega International Commercial Bank by his excellency Sir Alan Swift Junior, President of the Republic of Palau, or his designee. Ti a House Joint Resolution, nadimo, gongera, teletal mo chance atetela yel interest rate tra yel loan. Malu ngi yel promissory note, dradongela blu belau, ma Mega International Commercial Bank li gitmokla Presidente la blu bela, Sir Alan Swift Junior, malu ngi yel adro lunteni. Ti a House Resolution, ta wu da aspe asabi anastasia by request.
Kore sol mega comment, ti gi de se, ora senkyo. Kondiok. Madat tirgero gul gonger etyal House Joint Resolution eleven das fifty eight das twelve S HD one el du oi. Om tok. Namai. Flo leader.
Presidente, kada, malmal morse next resolution, adoption galender. Ma move da passa House Joint Resolution eleven das sixty, das twelve S.
Cleragam iwa title.
House Joint Resolution number eleven das sixty, das twelve S. A House Joint Resolution to express sorrow, sympathy and support to all those affected by the recent devastating wildfires on the island of Maui. Ti a House Resolution, nadimo, olta klitareng, ma support el morti gi de la adal tirra blu affected tier se l, kada ngir mle, klosse se blu ra Maui. Ti a Resolution, ta wu da delegeta Sebastian R. Marino, mora ubtoishe la da la, so delegeta el ontrima taral biro lau.
Kore sol mega comment. Diok. Senator Aldabel.
Presidente, akadi, eti amalwi resolution, ngoti se l guk gora ah, osunge de ma, aru la blu belau, el morte al, te gora milgitmo, eh, devastation ra blu Maui. Ndidi ti, Presidente, gora wal salma leit. Ti amgata gata ra, ilha peni event, ma nga uha, gora di, agundase klasakalin may gal, figursal diser adal mla da, esno uta de ti a gora, di nganiya, atter se l aksuol. Akadi, mo yegi eh, di nganiya mki ta da passa ngi, ndidi gora wal salma leit.
Kamigo tirashort wishes. Kam kouta mka ngadongashe senegid, mora order. Flo leader.
Oh, Presidente, kada, kada mla rises, e gora, amde diskaset etyal resolution eh eh, gora wat led agree, ma se bol se eda lmutel, de differ aksioner gi de eh, de, labora kamitim la gora, asan ngi ma kamitim la dilutel berry fai, gi de information na alse etyang la, eh, ta ga aksioner ngim. A motion ah amo, o differ aksion, eh, asan ngi ma kamitim.
Sir, motion namdu ne segn, el mo differ aksion, etyal mo expressa sympathy, mora, a Maui. But tirgero gul gonger du oi. Oi. Ti a assign el mora foreign affairs se l, ungraa ra Maui. Flo leader.
Eh, Presidente, e gi gi de, lo ises se gi de, mo ulopamora e gi de gora calendar gi de, gi de la to gora resolution. Ma do, le malme, etyal agenda, morse thirteen. Di nganiya, ma fourteen. Eh, do gora fifteen, Presidente, nganiya, e gi, mal, but to goro, karo se communication, miscellaneous communication. Om morse eleven das eight seventy two. El mol mut se l eleven das nine one five, eh, direkli, Presidente, nganiya, se l, esel communication, le direkli mle. Kada mla, ah, do lngit, mbo se eda, direkli place ngi, calendar, se l mo miscellaneous communication eleven das nine one six, se ti a klo tutel communication, el narap PUC. El meri chairman gi de la, Vice President Mario, el gi de la se l guk led adu ngi, la ban triarada PUC rieli. Ma klosse tutel the place ngi, ah, etyal calendar gi de, mbo sebe el, mo partner recordar betla adal mla wisi ngi. E yehi, Mr. President, ta communication, el meri gi de la, la karo se la adal ma, HNC ma, karo se la ad. Mdi, do lngit, ta betla adal, ma di bo do ngudel, e gi de, das one, eh, e gi de rogul resolution, eh, de guk du esai gi de wal gora mo kankester ra na kamitira, eh, gi de, ma de, guk ti de ta ga no, turni el require aksion, e bo sebe eda guk me address ra hau lau ra. E gi de, eh, Mr. Presidente, nganiya som, do el gi de la, e gi gi de communication eh. E gora wu adal mal.
Di nganiya, ti lngit, ma e gi gi de, communication, mo yegal sum, nganiya, gora kamke ngi, le gora kamitir gmeu. E bo, da gao de ngi, ngi wasen, ngi necessaril, nganiya gi de la meru, le mo aisma do ru, le ma, nganiya triple gi de la morni eh, agundase ngi, bo, da gao de ngi. Flo leader.
Presidente, adalga, eh, de, de, le malme morse next sixteen, miscellaneous business. Ma nganiya, miscellaneous business ra betla de, bo sebe eda, Mr. Atella, beka Senator.
Miscellaneous business. Senator Tawal.
Sir Presidente, madali takla luring, eh, di uasi etyal, gora uha isel meri. Asel miscam eleven das eight eight eight. Presidente, ti a kamitir a education, nadimla ti ala, kada mo, dinga ambassador ra taewang nga blu belau. Kom, ah, lini se tal time, te yel, kada taewang, amaluusel mel, goro ngi, ta to gora udo de mora se urti. Eh, ti a gado uru ringin, di kabulmenta taewang, alireng, sumo gi se gi de, mlo si il, nganiya lmusi il, mora, se l Taiwan Scholarship, se l Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Se Mofa Scholarship. Tunusi awu du, darte klu gora, du dram regel, e ngi de la telal, du taewang. Alu musi il, mo se gi de scholarship. Eh, de si siul time, te direl, gitmaklimo si ira, nga blu belau, nga la school, e gi de school eh, e ngi la te ngerti de morse academic achievement award, le wa, lu il telai, du du dra, ablua taewang, malu ngi elol, mle darte, du dam regel. Ti a gi de Presidente, a direkli mal ngi, ngi esel man nga lege. Ma klo lo ngil, ngil, Presidente ra, Aldabel ra, nga liberal, nga school taewang, ngi Miss Yolso Victor, Presidente, ma Miss Minrang Subdian. Vice Presidente, a gi de la, amoldin no, masa ambassador, eh, meri nga, asulil, ma kabulmenta taewang, ta gi de, ngi te al, nguaya, se l guk gora, ek, eh, le la ngisel mora nga school se. Eh, teri gat, teri ngi, da di dun, ases school, ah, Minchuani University. Ma ktuwa ti al, Presidente, se mal ngi, ti al, te yede nga lege de
Mr. President, we are here to see the Ministry of State and domestic affairs. We want to see the opportunities that the government has. Even though the domestic affairs are still a priority, the government is still helping the state government, including accounting, including legal assistance. After all this, Mr. President, when you introduce your resolution, the Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment, the Environment Department, will help the state government to get a permit from the Department of Agriculture. The specialization is not limited to the Ministry of Agriculture. It is also limited to the other ministries and the state government with limited resources. The Ministry of Agriculture, although it is a priority, will help the government to do it. After all this, we want to see the financial resources and domestic affairs. We will extend the service of the state. We want to see the government to help us. After all this, I want to see the Senator, Mr. President, who is very famous. We want to see the government to take the budget hearings. We want to see the government, yes, the House of Delegates, the State. We want to see the government to be able to inform the information directly. It was a very productive meeting. Hopefully, we can continue the process. Mr. President.
Senator.
President Ramal Masauli, Admiral Ramle hesitated on the ruling of the state government. Because President Ramal said the legislature of the state is going to give the executive branch a responsibility to take. The other one is going to give the local administration. After all this, Ramle hesitated on the hearing. We want to see the oversight of the government. We want to see the state government to help. After all this, the state government is saying to help. Even though it is a priority, it is not allowed. The block grant, local revenue, lease revenue, rental. We want to see the investment of the local government. The finance report is going to be given by the local government. The revenue of the state. The government is going to give the revenue of the local government. We want to see the state to help. The state government is not allowed to enter the national government. The government is not allowed to enter. The government is not allowed to enter. The performance report, the financial report. We want to amend the Performance Budget Act. The government requires the budget submitted. And we want to see the previous year's financial report. The president is not allowed to enter. We want to see the actual financial report for the last two years. We want to see the request for the budget. And we want to see the forecast for the next two years. The five-year financial picture. We want to see the position of the government. The government is not allowed to enter. The proposal for the house mail to increase the state block grant. And we want to see the report. We want to see the government to address the problems. The miscom 11-890. 11-890. We want to see the report of the state in 2018, 2019. That's what, five years? Almost five years behind. The findings of the audit findings. We want to see the procurement law. The state government is not allowed to enter. Apply the state government expenditure fund. After all this, we want to see the public auditor. We want to bring up the issues of the public auditor. We want to see the Ministry of State, the Department of Domestic Affairs. We want to see the movement. We want to see the five-year test pilot project. We want to see the financial report of the state. We want to see the financial report. The president said the block grant is not allowed to enter. We want to see the government to make sure. And we want to see the government to make sure it is accountable, transparent. After all this, Mr. President.
Senator.
Mr. President, we want to see the president of the Senate. We want to see the president of the Senate. We want to see the president of the Senate. We want to see the president of the Senate. The capital is August 28. And we want to see the president of the Senate. We want to see the president of the Senate. The president of the Senate. And we want to see the president of the Senate. And we want to see the president of the Senate. One point six million. The tax of the PPUC. The tax of the PPUC. Mr. President, we want to see the president. We want to see the president. We want to see the president of the PPUC. And we want to see the president of the PPUC. We want to see the president of the PPUC. And we want to see the president of the PPUC. After all this, Mr. President, we want to see the president of the House. We want to see the president of the House. We want to see the president of the PPUC. We want to see the president of the PPUC. We want to see the president of the PPUC. The financial matters of the Senate. We want to see the president of the PPUC. And we want to see the president of the PPUC. And we want to see the national government and the state government. And we want to see the president of the PPUC. We want to see the president of the PPUC. And we want to see the president of the PPUC. After all this, we want to see the president of the PPUC. We want to see the president of the PPUC. We want to see the president of the PPUC.
Senator.
Mr. President, I want to say something. The president, you have to remind me, Madam Chair, of the committee. After all this, Mr. President, we want to see the state. The state has authorized the forecast. We want to see the president of the committee. The Statute of the Free Association. The Ministry of Finance. We want to see the state. After all this, Mr. President, we want to see the allocation. We want to see the state. We want to see the state. We want to see the state. We want to see the productivity. We want to see the productivity. We want to see the productivity. We want to see the accountability and transparency. Create productivity. We want to see the international community. We want to see the international community. Mr. President.
Senator. Senator.
Mr. President, I want to say something. The president of the Senate. The president of the Senate. The president of the Senate. The hearing of the budget hearing about national state government. We want to see the government to help. The president is telling the government. The president is talking about fiscal strategy. The government is asking for the money. We want to see the information. We want to see the government. The executive branch. The legislative branch. We want to see the strategy. We want to see the government. After all this, Mr. President, during the budget hearings. We want to see the areas that the government supports. Education. Education is a major area. The government is recruiting students. We want to see the government. The government is asking for the students. The salary is a major factor. The salary is a major factor. The government is asking for the students. The government is asking for the students. The salary is a major factor. We want to see the government. We want to see the security of the future. We want to see the quality of the education. We want to see the government. 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 We want to see the productivity. We want to see the school supplies. We want to see the school improvement. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the policy. We want to see the investors. We want to see the investors. The Justice Ministry, Mr. President. The Justice Ministry is challenging the government. The government is facing the problem of management. The management structure, the management appointment. The director of the Bureau. We want to see the challenges. We want to see the problem. We want to see the crime involved. We want to see the state. We want to see the funding support. We want to see the issues. We want to mitigate the problems. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. It's alarming. The president is every week, almost every day. We want to see the government. The government is not premature. The government is expecting. It's alarming. The program is not allowed to enter. The government requires a report. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. The government is challenging the capacity. We want to see the government. 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 The government is questioning the house. We want to see the government. 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 The hearing of the state government. We want to see the 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 government. The House of Delegates. We want to see the government. The state government. We want to see the 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 process of the budget. We want to see the government. 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 Mr. President.
Senator. Maria Dirga, Ms. Lennis. Senator Mariur.
Mr. President. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. The state government. We want to see the 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 government. In 2024. We want to see the government. 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 We want to see the ministry and agencies that provide the money. We want to see the government. 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 In 2011, 4 million was given to the state block grant. In 2023, 11 million. 10 million for the president. In 2024, 11 million was increased. We want to see the government. 14 million was given to the state block grant. We want to see the government. 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 Mr. President.
Mr. President. After all this, Mr. President. Mr. President, the chairman, the senator. We want to see the government. The Ministry of State. We want to see the government. 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 We want to see the ministry. We want to see the government. 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 We want to see the budget. We want to see the government. We want to see hospitals, schools, libraries. We want to see the essential services. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the chairman, the senator. We want to see the government. 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 We want to see the chairman. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. The president is 15 days. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. The chairman. We want to see the committee. We want to see the committee. We want to see the committee. We want to see the chairman. Senator.
We want to see the public auditor. We want to see the public auditor. We want to see the government. We want to see the financial report. We want to see the governor. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the government. We want to see the proposals. We want to see the requests. We want to see the changes. We want to see the changes in the house. We want to finalize the decision. We want to see the house. We want to see the country. We want to see the Statute of the Land. We want to see the government. We want to see the committee.
The president said that the president is not allowed. The budget. Mr. President.
Okay, the money is not allowed. Okay, the president said that the committee of the Office of Minutes. The money is not allowed. The central officer said that the budget is not allowed. The state executive. The hearing is not allowed. The president said that the money is not allowed. Leader.
The president said that Ms. Lenys said that the announcement. The announcement is not allowed. The announcement is not allowed.
Senator Savau.
The president said that the committee of the House Bill. The committee of the Office of Minutes. The members of the committee of the Office of Minutes. One o'clock. The committee of the Ministry of the Department. The government said that the issues of tourism are not allowed. The issues are not allowed. The office of the committee of the National Affairs. The regulation is not allowed. The president said that the money is not allowed. It exists. The board of members of the Ministry of the Department said that the money is not allowed.
The committee discussed the issue.
The president said that the money is not allowed. The tourism is not allowed. The focus is not allowed.
Okay.
Mr. President. The committee of the House Bill. The committee of the Office of Minutes. The government said that the money is not allowed. The money is not allowed.
Senator Inavo.
The president said that the 11-911. The president said that the committee of the Office of Minutes. The chairman of the Office of Minutes. Look into this issue. The concern about race. Unless you find out. The money is not allowed.
Okay. The chairman Lorenz said that the committee discussed. I'm going to say that. Leader.
The president said that the members of the committee of the House Bill. The committee reported the House Bill 11-76-8S. The rule of the House. The distribution. The internet. The communication. The report. The committee of the Office of Minutes. After the meeting. The committee said that the money is not allowed. The committee said that the money is not allowed.
Okay. The money is not allowed. The money is not allowed. The official of the Central Office. Senator Mariur and Senator Inavo.
Okay. Mr. President. Hosted. The president said that the money is not allowed. The president said that the money is not allowed.
The motion is not allowed. The leader of the board. The money is not allowed.
Oui.
I'm talking.